Come in here, film me.
Whoa, whoa, please move out of my way. I don't need your help.
Yes, you do. You're in our building. You have a camera with a microphone. How can I help you?
Don't take my picture. I'll tear your camera up.
No, 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 no.
I'll tear your camera up.
Bring it on!
I'll tear your camera up.
Get out of my face, sir.
Don't take my pictures. You don't take my-
I called him a clown, yes. Yes, you're a clown.
Disrespectful.
Good job, Karen.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I said, "Good job, Karen."
That's not my name.
Yeah. Well, you didn't tell me your name. Quit pushing up against me! Quit pushing up-
You assaulted one of my-
Quit pushing up against me!
You assaulted one of my-
Quit pushing me! Hey, everybody. KULT News, back again with another video. Today, we're at the Columbus City Schools Board of Education Administration Office. And, uh, this time, right now, I already knew what happened. And this is one of the craziest ones we've experienced yet. Uh, I was assaulted, and I defended myself. So, this is definitely one for the books. There are a couple of police officers inside here right now taking a report from the folks uh, that I had a little run-in with. So, it's gonna be interesting to see if the police do the right thing and hold the folks that assaulted me responsible, or if they're gonna try and turn this into some sort of an assault on my part for simply defending myself. But, make no mistake, I absolutely will defend myself. Don't push me. Today, we are at the Columbus City Schools Board of Education Administration Offices. This is in Columbus, Ohio. And these good folks handle, uh, all sorts of administrative issues, apparently, for the, uh, the Board of Education in Columbus. Let's pop in on these folks and see if they respect our rights to take photos and videos in public and in publicly accessible places. Very good. I'm sorry? Well, right now, I'm filming you.
Why are you filming me?
I always film people. They come out and ask me why I'm filming.
Well, that's a good thing, but this is private property, so I appreciate if you don't film me.
Whoa, oh, this is private property? Who owns this?
It's Columbus City Schools.
Oh, it's public property.
It's public, but we don't allow filming on-
That's- don't be silly. It's public property. Of course-
We don't even let- we don't allow the media to film.
Sir, I-
They have to film on the sidewalk, okay?
That's silly. It's public property. I'm standing on public property.
Just don't film me. I'm just asking. Don't film me.
Then you might wanna walk away from me, sir, because you're-
I'll tell you what.
You're coming across as somewhat aggressive, and I'm not liking it, so I'm gonna ask-
I'm the first thing from aggressive. I'm just asking.
Okay, so am I.
If you wanna film, please go on the sidewalk.
So am I. I also am- I will not, sir. I have every right to be- I have every right to be right here filming and photographing. So... You have a fallout shelter downstairs in the basement there.
Sir, you cannot come in here, film me. I'm sorry.
Whoa, whoa, I can. Whoa.
I'm sorry. I asked you to leave, please. Please.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry, who are- sir, who are you?
Could you have someone-
This is crazy. Sir, who are you?
Sir, you cannot come up-
I'm sorry, who are you? I don't even know-
You cannot read my shirt. You cannot come in here and film-
Your name is Safety and Security? I know, can I get your name?
Yes, sir. You can't come in here and film, sir. What can I ask? What's your purpose? Who can I direct you to?
Sir, I have every right to come in this building. Are you gonna prevent me from walking in this building, sir? I'm walking in.
Who can I direct you to?
Please move out of my way, sir.
How can I help you?
Please move out of my way.
How can I help you?
I don't need your help.
Yes, you do. You're in our building. You have a camera with a microphone. How can I help you?
You can step out of my way, how you can help. I just told you how you can help me. Sir, you can step out of my way.
Sir, how can I help you?
I'm gonna go around here, sir. I'm gonna go around here. Do not lay your hands on me and stay away from me.
I'm not threatening. How can I help you?
You are threatening me.
No, I'm not.
This is very-
No, I'm not. I'm asking a question. How can I help you?
Sir, I just told you-
How can I help you? Please don't film me.
Then get away from me.
No, I'm asking-
This is absolutely bizarre.
What's your business in the building with your phone and your camera?
My business is none of your business.
It is, 'cause I work here, so I need to know what your business is so I can direct myself.
You won't even identify yourself, sir.
Sir, how can I help you?
You can leave me alone. You can get your hand out of my face.
Sir, could you please stop filming me?
Then walk away.
I can't walk away. This is my job.
You know, I came in here to get some flyers and do a little- 'Cause it's none of your business, sir.
It is my business, sir.
Well, you know what? I think I'm gonna sit here for a while now, then. I'm gonna- in fact, you know what? Here's what we're gonna do. Here's what I'm gonna do.
I'll tell you what.
You wanna leave me alone in a public lobby, I'll tell you exactly what-
Sir, this is a public lobby, but it is the Board of Education-
Don't take my picture. I'll tear your camera up.
No, 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 no.
I'll tear your camera up.
Bring it on!
I'll tear your camera up.
Get out of my face, sir.
You don't take my pictures, sir. You don't take my pictures. You don't take my- You don't take my pictures. You're gonna be there.
I want you in a public building to get out of here. Ma'am, please get your hand off me. Let me get flyers.
I'm not- I don't need to answer your questions. I don't need to answer your questions.
This is not-
You need flyers. Tell me why you're-
I need a lead, ma'am. I need a lead. I'll tell you that, ma'am.
Don't touch me.
I'm not gonna touch you.
She touched him. That was problem number one.
I'm not touching anybody. I'm stepping in here to get some leaflets here.
Okay, then you can come right here.
I'm going to these doors here. I have no need to go back there. I'm just getting some stuff here and-
But there's nobody there. Nobody's come out, but you can't just come in and just start filming. You need to let us know what's going on.
Yes, I can.
If you wanna come in here and grab, uh, some information, that's fine.
It's silly to say that I can't walk into a public building with cameras.
This is a board of education property.
I'm- it's a-
It's not a public, public area.
Who owns a board of education? It's a public entity. We're in a public building. I have every right to walk into a public building and take pictures of anything that I can see.
You have all the guys to come in and grab your leaflets or whatever information that you need.
And take photos while I'm doing it. And take photos while I'm doing it.
Okay.
I'm- it's not that-
So, do you have everything that you need?
I do not. I would appreciate actually getting some stuff without being hassled. This is just really weird. It's really weird. What are you guys so paranoid about at the Board of Education? Well, it's weird. Why are you afraid of cameras?
Well, nobody's afraid of cameras.
Here he comes again. Here he comes again. Here you go, buddy. Here you go. Take all the pictures if you want.
Sir.
Hey, your name's Mike? That's my name too, buddy.
Sir.
Good to meet you.
Please be respected.
I have not been treated with respect since I walked in this building.
You have not treated us with respect since you walked into this building.
Taking pictures and videos is not disrespectful. I'm sorry. If you're so concerned about pictures and video in this building, then you need to ask yourself, "What are you doing that makes you worried about photos and videos?"
We're not doing anything.
And yet-
But you can't just walk in, take pictures of buildings without being asked about what you're doing.
But yet I can.
There's a lot of things that happen in buildings nowadays.
That's- that's a beauty.
So, safety and security, we have to make sure that our buildings are safe and secure when people come into the building.
It's- I-
That's all there is.
Don't you have- I mean, are these doors not locked? Are these doors locked?
Our safety and security person that you just talked to-
The one that hassled me and said I couldn't take photos in the building? Yeah, well, he's wrong. The First Amendment says that I can't take photos in the building.
No, First Amendment says that you have- you have the opportunity to do some things, but you can't just walk into a building-
And take pictures.
And do what you want.
I agree.
Okay.
We're- we're agreeing on that.
So, that's-
I can't walk into a building and do what I want.
If you've come in and gotten your information-
But I can walk into a building and take pictures.
You've come in and gotten your information, correct?
You have like Damon Wayans, and you dress like him too.
Sir, how can we help you?
I just want you guys to leave me alone so I can go through these flyers and get stuff without being hassled.
Could you please stop filming, sir?
Then quit coming out and getting in front of the camera.
Sir, just please stop filming. Please don't take my picture. Please don't take my pictures, sir.
That is a fantastic thumbnail right there, I gotta tell you.
Please don't take my picture.
If you don't want your picture taken, then walk away from me and leave me alone. This is bizarre.
What happens from here?
Sir, how can we help you?
Just leave me alone. Let me get my flyers, and I'm out of here.
The police is on the way.
Well, if the police are on the way, then I'll wait. I'll wait. I'm not gonna- I'm not gonna run from the police. And I think-
Sir, we asked you several times, how can we help you?
And I've asked you to leave me alone.
I can't do that. I'm trying to assist you and trying to help, sir.
How are you gonna assist me? Just leave me alone. This is ridiculous. Absolutely bizarre. What are you guys worried about? You got multiple cameras here. It's ridiculous.
I'm asking you not to film or take pictures of me or this building inside this facility, sir.
And you probably shouldn't work in a public sector. I was saying-
Ask me very nicely.
And I'm asking you to leave me alone very nicely.
Can't leave you alone.
I'm afraid to turn my back on you, sir. You've been very aggressive-
Why are you afraid of me? Don't be afraid of me.
Okay, if you don't wanna-
If this is the information you're looking for, please give it to me.
Okay, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna stand over here so I can aim the camera. I'm trying to aim the camera away from you. If you wanna stand over here- I don't trust you.
Don't even- leave it out the wall, sir.
I'm sorry. I don't trust you. I'm not aiming at the wall. I'm gonna aim to you, 'cause I don't trust you.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is crazy.
Sir, please get what you need to get off the wall, the information. We're trying to help you, but-
I- I just don't trust you behind me.
Okay.
You're freaking me out, man. Seriously, what is the deal? What are you guys worried about? What is going on here? Because it's so paranoid about a camera.
You can leave.
This is- okay, all right, all right. Let's- let's make this official then, shall we? All right. Sir, my name's- oh, wait, here we go. Oh, come on. Is it still on? Yeah, okay. For half a second, I thought it turned off. Yeah. Sir, my name's Mike Norton. I'm with KULT News. Do you wanna tell me why you're freaking out about a camera in the lobby of the Board of Education? Sir? No? Are the police here? Did the- oh, thank God. Thank God. Would you- ma'am, would you like to tell me why you guys are freaking out about a- about a, uh- camera in the lobby of the Board of Education? Hang on, hang on. No, we want to- stand- excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Jeez. There you go. Stay over there. Leave me alone. Let me eat my stuff. The sooner you leave me alone and let me eat my stuff, the sooner I'm out of here, chief. Don't you understand that? I'm not breaking the law. I'm not hurting anybody. I'm standing here minding my own business, trying to get some flyers, and I've been told that you guys behave this way. I guess- I guess they weren't incorrect. Oh, sir. These people leave me alone. I came in here with a camera rolling, because I've been worried about them. I came in to get some flyers, and these people are freaking out. They're literally putting their hands on me and trying to force me out of the building. If you could maybe let these folks know that I have every right to be in here and take pictures while I get some public literature, and they can leave me alone, I would appreciate it.
Hey, get your literature and we'll go.
I'm not going with you.
I mean, get your literature and you can leave.
Yeah, you can go. I mean, I- I'll get my literature, but these people are freaking me out. I'm not gonna- I'm sorry. I'm not gonna be rushed out of this building. I have every right to be here taking pictures.
If you can get the literature, I asked him several times what he needed. How can we help him? If he wanted to take pictures, I asked him several times not to take a photograph of us or film us. He said, "We can't tell him what to do," and he wanted to come in here with his video camera and phone and he was taking pictures. So, we asked him-
Pictures, I can't tell him not to. You know, you guys got cameras, they got cameras, we got cameras. Just get your stuff and let's- I understand that. I understand that. I'll- I'll be honest with you. I'm not gonna be bullied out of this building. So, I'm not leaving until you leave, and if you're staying here, then I'm staying here, and I'm gonna document this whole thing. I have every right to be here. I am a journalist, doing my job, and these people are harassing me. I'm not harassing them. I'm sorry?
Where do you journal there?
You'll find out when you're on, uh, seen by tens of thousands of people later on tonight. Depends on how things go here. Depends on if you try to violate my rights or if you respect my rights and stand up for your oath. You can't- well, you should respond to every Karen and Darren that calls you guys. I get that. You guys get some- I know what you deal with. Trust me. But how you respond to the Karens and Darrens is a whole different story. And so far, you're batting a thousand. You've let them know I have every right to be in a public building taking photos. And the soonest people realize that the camera is not your enemy, the camera, depending on your behavior, is your new best friend. So, when somebody comes into a public building and confronts public servants, the public servants can choose to behave irrationally and paranoid, or they can choose to behave professionally. Your response here today and his response and the other gentleman's response, it almost got physical with me, is extremely unprofessional, and you will all-
Not professional when you walk into a building and you don't identify who you are, who you're with. We don't know what you're doing. You just walked in here, said you were picking up literature, and then just started filming everybody. That's not being transparent. That is not telling us what you're doing.
I was filming everybody before I came in the building.
This is the property of the Board of Education.
Who owns that?
This is the property of the Board of Education.
Who owns the Board of Education? And who owns that?
You know what?
It's a public.
Sir, if you come to get your literature, then, you know, you-
I'm just waiting for you folks to stop harassing me. The sooner you learn you're not gonna harass me and bully me out of the building, the sooner you're gonna learn. So, I'm just documenting my experience to the Board of Education to pick up some literature.
If he's gotten his literature, he can exit. Um, there's nothing else for him to do here. There's no appointment for him this afternoon.
You don't know that?
Um, I do know that.
You do not know that?
So, if you could take care of that, then, I don't know who he's referring to as Karens and Darrens, but nobody here in this building is named either one of these people. Thanks.
So, what she's saying is, "Will you please evict this man from a public building?" The answer is no. He'll leave, and then I'll leave.
Okay, sir.
Just let me talk to him.
Thanks.
There you go.
Get your literature.
Thank you, sir.
I'm outside.
And it's Officer Golden, I assume?
Yes, sir.
That's number 1851. I appreciate it. And like I said, I wasn't doing anything bizarre, unusual, and I did identify them, myself, to them. Um, and just for the record, and I know you have to make reports, so I'm gonna reach in my bag, get something, a piece of equipment. Um, uh, just so you know. My name is Mike Norton. I'm with KULT News. And you, sir, Officer Golden, frankly, in my opinion, have done a fantastic job today. You- you didn't say, "Unfortunately, it's his right to record in public." Um, I hear that a lot, and it's very disappointing, because it's not unfortunate. It's fortunate that we have rights. Uh, I think it's unfortunate, frankly, a lot of things are, but- but... You know, exercising our rights is not unfortunate. It's unfortunate for people to have things to hide, like this gentleman here. Little paranoid. You come back out. You don't wanna be on camera, but you come back out. I mean, you're not- come on, really? Anyways, so- so I appreciate it. Um, and, uh, and like I said, this has been a, uh- let's just say, this has been a test. They have failed. You appear to have not, so thank you. Um, and yeah, I did enough by myself here. They know exactly who I am. I'm not a- I'm not a regular. I'm not here harassing these folks. Uh, first time I've ever been here, maybe the last time I'm ever coming here. But I just, uh, we had an experience with another Department of Education that were also extremely paranoid about cameras. And it always concerns me. It concerns me when public entities freak out about cameras. Often, more often than not, it means they have something to hide. So, it looks like these folks have-
I've been wearing one for over ten years, so-
You've been- what's that?
I said, "I've been wearing one for over ten years. I record everybody and everything."
You know, I was-
I'm not wearing one now, 'cause I'm working extra duty, but-
And I was talking about it the other day. Between you and me, I would think it would suck to have to wear a camera and videotape every single thing that I'm doing, basically, all day long as part of my job. Doesn't that kinda suck? I mean, it used to, I mean, but isn't- I mean, how do you like-
It's today's policing.
It just seems like-
Today's society is-
I- I, you know, and I used to wanna be a cop when I was a kid. I did.
You got cameras there, she's got a camera.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's got cameras. They got cameras.
Oh, there you go. So, everybody's got cameras. These people are just paranoid. Their reaction was ridiculous. Um, they will likely be seen by tens of thousands of people. So, anyhow, I appreciate you coming out, and like I said, I'm heading out of here pretty quick myself. Might as well let these folks know that I'm not getting bullied out of here. I'm not getting pushed out of here. Um, I come in here, uh, you know, exercising my rights, get a few flyers, and then I head out.
You're not related to Gordon, are you?
Gordon?
I worked with her for many years at Ross and Dayton.
Lot of relatives.
Okay. Gold- is Golden more uncommon than I think it is?
I don't know.
In the middle somewhere?
Yeah, I do have big family there.
Yeah.
Lot of cousins and-
That's a cool last name.
Oh, my goodness. Um... Thank you. You bet. Thank you for coming out. Well, that's the Columbus City Schools Board of Education. That's the greeting we got here. A little paranoid, to say the least, about cameras and, uh, videos. I won't have you. Um, one of the security guards here came this close to assaulting me. I- I think it's safe to say that the Board of Education in Columbus got a, uh, a bit of education from KULT News today. Mike Norton, KULT News, Board of Education, Columbus City Schools, Columbus, Ohio. Already dealt with this. This is- wait, timeout, timeout, timeout. This is public property.
May I make one comment, sir?
I have all ears.
All right. All of the people in the apartment complex walked their dogs in there, and I was just trying to save your beach.
I appreciate that. That's funny. I appreciate it. Hey, do me a favor though. Quick, may I ask you a question, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you're a supervisor here. Hold on, hi.
I'm a supervisor here, but how can I help you?
Okay, well, you'll see a video later on tonight or tomorrow of what happened to me when I walked in this building half an hour ago. It was inappropriate, it was unprofessional, and in my opinion, it was criminal. I was assaulted by one of the employees in here. Now, however, I'm not a whiny- I'll be frank with you. I'm not a whiny little bitch, so when somebody puts their hand on me, I don't- I don't scream assault. So, I'm not gonna go cry into the police that I was assaulted, but the general thumb should be, never put your hands on people. I'm sorry?
Have you talked to the Columbus Police Department?
Uh, oh, I most certainly did talk to the Columbus Police Department. Yes, yes. Yeah, they showed up here. They called the police on me, 'cause I had a camera in the lobby. It's bizarre.
And if you spoke to Columbus Police Department, then what's the question for you?
The question for you is, uh, I guess, can you ensure that, or, I- Well, I see supervisor on your- on your shirt. I'm assuming you might have some authority to at least ensure that future- in- in future events, the employees don't assault- don't assault people.
If you had a report in Columbus Police Department, then that's where your issue is. I'm gonna need you to stay over there.
Well, I- I haven't filed it. No, my point is, is that I had multiple security people coming out here harassing me.
Give me one second. I gotta finish one other thing, and I'll come back in.
All right. I'll be- I'll be out of here properly. If not, watch the video. It'll be online very soon, and it's pretty appalling.
I just need you to go to the sidewalk.
Well, I'm not gonna go to the sidewalk. Wait, it's- oh, my God. Oh, my God! No! You know I can come in here and record too, right? You do understand that.
You understand that if Columbus Police came out before, do I need to call them back?
Please do. If you think that I'm committing a-
Please go outside.
Do you think I'm committing a crime here?
Could you please go outside with me for a second?
Sir, I've already dealt with the police on this.
Can we go outside, please?
Please don't bump into me.
Uh, please go outside.
Well, I'm just saying, this is crazy.
Please go outside.
Uh-
For your own safety and mine, will you please step outside?
For my own safety? I don't know what that means.
Sir, will you please step outside?
Sir, please leave me alone. I have every right to be here. The police have already been here. I can't believe it.
They're coming back.
Okay, well, then you're gonna learn a valuable lesson twice.
Please step outside.
I'm not stepping outside. Please leave me alone. Sir?
Please step outside.
Um, excuse me, sir. Can you get out of my, uh, what? You're in my personal space, and you're bumping into me now, sir.
Please step outside.
Do I need another assault charge here?
Please step outside.
Please get away from me.
Please step outside.
Excuse me, sir. Please, get away from me.
Mr. Hoffman, could you send the Columbus Police Department back out here?
Yeah, apparently, he didn't learn the lesson from the last time the police are here, and they told your people there's nothing you could do. Unbelievable. And had you not told me to not to step on the sidewalk out here, to not be anywhere but the sidewalk, I'd already been gone right now. But when you- you claim that I can't be recording where I'm recording, I'm gonna be here recording. Am I safe to say you- you don't wanna identify yourself? Would you tell me your name, sir? It's bizarre. Absolutely bizarre. It's like you people don't learn. It's like one of you doesn't learn from the mistakes of others. Literally, we just- I mean, how many times do you have to have the police come here and tell you he has every right to do what he's doing before you figure it out? I mean, good Lord. I'm embarrassed for you.
He has no business here. He's only coming to pick up this, uh, information.
I do have business here. You might wanna tell him that the police said I had every right to be here last time and-
To get your information. And once you pick up your information, he asked you to leave.
Oh, oh, did he?
Yes.
Oh, so you think I'll be arrested this time?
I- I don't- I don't care what happens.
Do you wanna identify yourself? 'Cause nobody here seems to wanna identify themselves.
Um, First Amendment right gives you a choice of free speech. It does not allow you to-
Free press.
Enter a building.
Free press, yes.
No, it does not allow you to enter a building and be disrespectful to the people that are in the building. We have security protocols in place.
So, I know I'm being disrespectful.
If you have business here, which you said you did, you picked up your flyers and your information, and you said you were gonna leave once you did that, have you completed your business?
No, ma'am, I have not.
What else do you need?
Well, first of all, I need this man to get out of my way so I can step back-
He will not. He will not.
Okay, I don't need him to get out of my way. I allow him.
He will not.
Are you preventing me from coming in the lobby now? Ma'am, are you now preventing me from coming in the lobby, and you wanna identify yourself?
He's already picked up his information. The officer, he talked with the officer. The officer let him know that once he did that, he can leave, so we're good.
All right. So, are you- are you advising this man that he should keep me out of the public lobby?
Sir.
Are you advising this man to keep me out of the public lobby? I did not get all the flyers I need. I did not get all the flyers I need. There you go, clown.
Excuse me-
What?
You're harassing our safety and security folks?
Am I harassing him?
You just called him a name?
Ma'am, you assaulted me earlier. Get your hand off my camera.
I didn't touch you earlier.
You just touched- I have it on video, ma'am. I have it on video. Get out of my face and I'll get this stuff and get out of here. I called him a clown, yes. Yes, you're a clown.
Disrespectful. Disrespectful.
Yeah, so was putting your hand on me, ma'am, and you did it.
You know what? I did not touch you.
I'll tear your camera up.
You did touch me. I have it on video.
I touched the rod of your camera.
Get out of my way. You had your hand on my chest. Get out of my way. I'll get what I need. Again, you're pushing up against me. You're pushing up against me. Get out of my way. You're right in my personal space. This is crazy.
This is not- this is-
Excuse me, ma'am. Get out of my way!
Please leave. This is no longer not-
Get out of my way!
Getting angry with me doesn't solve anything.
Get out of my way. You are pushing up against-
Please leave.
Get your hand off of me.
Please leave, sir. Now you're trying to force you into a building.
I'm trying- I am trying to get stuff over here. Get out of my face!
You're free to leave.
I'm free to stay.
Okay, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Please leave.
Get out of my face, and I will. I'm getting my literature and leaving.
The literature's behind you.
Then get out of my face.
I'm not moving, sir, but please leave.
All right, then. Here you go. Oh, there you go. Good job, Karen.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I said, "Good job, Karen."
That's not my name.
Yeah. Well, you didn't tell me your name.
That's not my name.
What's your name?
That's not my name.
You don't wanna show your name.
You're not here to do business with me.
You hide your name tag.
No, where's- where's your name?
I'm not a public servant.
What is your name?
I'm not a public servant.
What is your name?
I'm not a public servant.
What is your business here?
I already told you what my business is.
No, you didn't. Tell me what your business is.
I told you earlier who I am and who I'm with.
No, you did not.
Yes, I did.
You did not identify yourself.
You don't remember the microphone? Oh, my gosh, right there.
You did not identify yourself.
KULT News.
No, who is that? I'm not familiar with your business.
Oh, you'll be very familiar with it.
One of every flyer.
Oh, bless your little heart. Thank you very much.
You're free to leave.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
This is our safety and security director. You can talk with him, please.
This is yours, sir?
You've got a-
Do these people have instructions to not put their hands on people and-
So, you're on private property.
This is not private property. This is ridiculous. This is public property. This is a pu- this-
This is owned by the Board of Education.
Who owns the Board of Education?
Sir, nobody owns the Board of Education.
Are you people- are you people crazy?
Nobody owns the Board of Education.
We do. The taxpayers do. The people do.
Sir.
The people do. I'm free to stay.
Leave as nicely, please leave.
Quit harassing me.
Please leave.
Quit harassing me.
Sir, please leave.
They called that-
Please leave. Zach, you watch back.
Let me sit and wait for the police to come and tell you a second time I have every right to be here. This is ridiculous. Clown. Jesus, unbelievable.
Sir, you're not gonna bogart your way back into the building. You're welcome to sit down. You're welcome to leave.
Am I welcome to drink out of a drinking fountain there? Can I do that, sir?
No, that doesn't work.
No, sir.
It doesn't work. It's been turned off since COVID.
Oh, it looks like I'm seeing water in it, though.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work. Quit pushing up against me! Quit pushing up, quit pushing up against me!
You've assaulted one of my members.
Quit pushing me!
You have assaulted one of my-
He's assaulting me by pushing against me.
You put your hands on one of my members.
He keeps pushing me.
Down 911.
Yeah, call 911. I've got it all on video, chief.
Here's the officer right here.
They're pushing me. Good. Yeah, I'll flag him down. Go to jail, chief. I'd like to show you some video footage. My name is Mike Norton. I walked in here to pick up some flyers and I did have that camera going. Walked in and we just went to go pick up some literature. And, uh, they got really aggressive. They, I mean, they got in my face. Um, at one point, uh, a woman in there was pushing me, put her hand on my chest and pushed me, um, which I have on video.
She did that after, um, another gentleman there threatened to break his camera.
Yeah, another man said, and I quote, "I will," he's saying on video, I'll show you. "I will, I will tear your camera up," is what he said. I will take it. I'm like, whoa, whoa, hey, hey. They're pushing me, literally physically pushing me out of a public building. I can't just get some freaking literature for them because I had heard about their reputation here. I recorded everything that happened. Um, and I'm glad I did because they lost their freaking minds. So, that was the first time. And they're like, whoa, call the police. I'm like, for what? For a man with a camera? I don't know. What is the issue here?
The police did come out and, and told us we were okay. We're in a public place.
Officer, officer, good one came out. He was here. I think it was, it was a good, oh, I don't know. Good man, I don't know. Gentleman came out. Okay. Um, he called them, you know, it is a public building, you know, yes, sir, why are you being here taking pictures, you know? And, and I believe his advice level was, you know, so, um, they did, they kinda left me alone because I basically told them point blank, listen, I'm not leaving here. I'm not gonna be bullied out of a public building. So, when the police leave, then I will. And the officer was understanding, saying, I get it.
So, what are we doing now?
So, but then I realized, like fifteen minutes in, oh crap, I, I forgot, uh, I didn't leave the last pamphlet out. So, I went back in here, this is a big pamphlet, right? I was standing here in the front lawn, just doing a quick little recap of, oh, so I'm here in the Board of Education, these guys awesome lines. Another security man came out, but I didn't see the first time. He came out and started telling me, I couldn't, I couldn't stand on the lawn. I, I can't be on the lawn. I'm like, whatever. Okay. And then he tells me, yeah, you just make sure you don't even record it over here on the sidewalk. So, I'm like, wait a second, dude, we literally just dealt with the police on this. It was very clear. I have every right to be in this building. You're kidding me, right? So-
What would you, what would you like us to do?
Wait, there's more to the story.
I don't mind creating the whole story here, but I prefer to solve the problem.
Okay, so, um, the man, the security man in here kept pushing me, physically with his body. He kept literally-
So, you'd like me to take an assault report?
I very much so. And I had to finally-
Did you know who it was?
I, I-
Can we show you the footage?
Yeah, well, I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. I need to just deal with him.
Gotcha.
Yeah, um, and the, the question still stands. Do you know who it was?
I don't know. Okay, all right.
None of these people identified themselves either.
This is the one that actually assaulted me. He kept pushing me and pushing me to a point where I finally pushed back and I, you know, I'm gonna defend myself. He grabbed my mic too.
Can you pause that and do you mind if I take a picture of your screen to go in there and say, I'm looking at this guy?
Is that a policeman? Has he texted you this, this picture?
No, I'm not giving away my number. Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Aw, man, come on.
Yeah, I've been a victim of death threats.
I'm sure you have.
From my own division releasing my number, sir.
No, I, I, I'm sure you have.
And I prevented him from coming into the building. I'm like, get out of the way. And I wasn't gonna push him. And then-
Okay, we're perfect. Sure. I don't, I don't need much, ju-ju-just enough to, because I don't know his name either. They're gonna say, who are you looking for?
Yeah, none of them wanted to identify themselves. They refusing it. I asked point blank, what is your name? What is your name? The security folks wouldn't give a name. The woman wouldn't give her name. Yeah, he kept body checking me and after about the eighth time, I, I defended myself. He grabbed my mic.
This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna go in there, I'm gonna identify and get his information. We're gonna report for you. We're gonna need your information as well to put on the same report. They're gonna ask for your information. You're gonna be asked for his. What we do is we take the report, we give you an incident number. Everyone's information will be on that report. Okay? So, yeah, and then-
And that's why, they've got cameras in there. I can't fathom possibility their cameras also didn't give the entire incident. It was very clear, he was very clear that he was aggressive.
And this one of those things where we, we don't have a subpoena, a search warrant or, um, uh, uh, the legal reason to go in there and seize that?
Well, we'll make a FOIA request for it.
There you go. All right. I just wanna make sure, you know, that I can't demand that they show me that.
This is not my first rodeo. That's why, I mean, I'm never gonna be the aggressor with these people, but eventually, after getting pushed like eight or nine times-
No, I got you. I got you.
I gotta defend myself. And he had my mic in his hand too. He literally grabbed my mic and was holding onto my mic when I finally defended myself.
Oh, they locked it?
Yeah. Um, what time did all this happen? I don't know when they closed. I, I don't worry.
What time is it right now? I think it's usually four or 4:30.
Yeah, it's twenty after four.
It was like 2:15, 2:15. I'm just gonna try and take care of the parking situation.
Is it on?
Yes, 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 yes.
Very efficient.
What's that?
Okay.
I figured they're all saying, oh, he assaulted him. Yeah, he said, she said, and I've got video footage.
Uh, 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 of course it is. So, I've got it.
You got your ID in here?
Um, sure.
Never be aggressive in a situation like this. And I must have told him eight times, quit pushing up against me. Quit pushing me. And then he grabbed my mic. So, anyways, do you want me to email you the video footage I have?
No, I, and this is why. Um, these, these things that you'll get the report number, it's the same thing we gave them, the same thing we explained to them. You have public records, get our body cam video, we ain't going to have a secret video or anything like that. Um, so, if it's, we have zone investigators. We have zone investigators. Zone investigators will get these reports and then they look into it. They're the ones that have the power and the authority and the legal ability to, um, ask for, uh, video, ask for records, to do all that stuff. They will actually be the caseworker. We do this part. We do the report. The report goes to someone that looks into it.
So, it just seems, my, my concern is, is that somebody somewhere is gonna, gonna listen to their side of the story, not look at the actual video evidence, and they're gonna go, well, you got five employees in here. They all say he assaulted the dude. It seems open a shot.
No, absolutely. Absolutely. So, I would tell you-
When they see the footage, they're gonna be like, Jesus, these guys were really aggressive.
I would tell you to preserve that. And, and, and the, the guy-
As the other thing you didn't mention, uh, our emails won't accept that much information.
I could, I could send a link though. I mean, I could, I just wanna make sure that they see. That's my biggest concern.
Send you the YouTube link.
Yeah, I could send a YouTube link. It'll be, it'll be all on YouTube within forty-eight hours. And these people are gonna be bombarded with phone calls saying, what the hell are you thinking? I mean, the police came here once, literally told them, he's not doing anything illegal. Just, you know, 801.
230601890, Officer Left, Ryan Adalbert.
Right. If, if you decide to go down and, and file charges, they're gonna wanna see
that video as well.
Oh.
Zone investigator's gonna ask for that video. All, all these things. So, investigators have the ability, they have a, a, a bigger email, um, capacity to accept bigger files. And they need to put that together. So, we don't collect that. We let a zone investigator or the investigator of that, that crime, that incident, even if it's just the prosecutor's office, we let them gather that information. Then they make their determination.
Now, I like to be a little proactive. Is there somebody that I can reach out to and say, hey, for, for this particular case, here's the video evidence for this or-
Look at the back of the card. It's prosecutor's office information? I would talk to them.
Okay, be able to give them a call. Yeah, this is my biggest concern, is that somebody's gonna look at this and say, hey, we got five responsible citizens here that all say this man assaulted him. Seems like an open shut case.
Right.
When the video says a very different story. I mean, they were aggressive. I mean, just, I'd say they were aggressive the minute I walked in the door. The fact of the matter is, they were aggressive before I walked in the door. I was out here taking pictures of this and a large man came out, put his hand on my face, and he said, don't take pictures of me. Don't. And it's like, well, first of all, get out of my face. Secondly, I can stand here and take pictures. No, you can't. I'm like, well, I can. In fact, I can go in there and take pictures. No, you can't. I go, yes, I can. So, the police showed up. Anyways, what's up?
All right.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, so, is the report just against the person that we showed you, the male security guard that we showed you, not the other two?
It, it, it's a report of the facts. And it, again, just like I told them, um, this person says this, this person says that. We take their information. We put both people's information on a report. We put a narrative that this person said this, this person said this other thing. And then that's where it goes to the zone investigator.
Because there was three people on our side that were a problem.
Okay, I would say, I would, uh, uh, yeah. That, we, we don't know if he was the primary problem when we first got here.
Right, right. He was the worst one. He was the one that was just really, really,